Item two is the organizational meeting, selection of Mayor Pro Tem, which occurs yearly at the second meeting. Well, really, the first meeting are only in November. So we'll be looking and I will do, I'll talk more about her at the next meeting. But thank you to Mayor Pro Tem Russo. Obviously, she's not here, but I appreciate her effort. And she was here when I was absent and during other affairs. So it's always been the Mayor Pro Tem has always done, filled in for me and done an excellent job, as she has done. So I appreciate her support and I'm sure we'll see that support with this year's Mayor Pro Tem. So we'll need a nomination.
I would like to make a motion to nominate.
Mr. Frederick?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to nominate Dave Rabello.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Ms. Burgess to nominate Councilman Rabello to be the Mayor Pro Tem for the 20, finishing '24 and to go to November of '25. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem Rabello there. And if you would grab that.
It's an honor. Thank you. It's an honor. Thank you, everyone.
We appreciate it. Item three is proclamations and presentations, Women Civic League of St. Clair Shores, Guns and Hoses, check presentation of the Police and Fire Department. Now, that occurred in August and Sarah, come on up. It was a great day over at Kite Monroe on that day. It was just fantastic.
It was all right.
It was amazing. Good evening, everybody.
The weather was good and it was good for the Police Department, not the Fire Department. I can see that.
It was good for everyone. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having us here. My name is Sarah D. Donatus and I'm with the Women Civic League of St. Clair Shores. We had our Guns and Hoses softball game on August 17th, a beautiful day, it turned out to be, between St. Clair Shores Police and Fire. Representing the Women Civic League today is Janice Neerhan, our president, Carol Kapasnak, one of our members, myself, Candace Cassandra Russo are very active members as well, as well as Debbie Powell, who is a member still, even though she lives far away now. Our own mayor threw out a mean first pitch. We appreciated that today. And we also want to give a special thanks to John Karen for help with setup and takedown and also for loaning your cornhole boards for anybody who wanted to play. It was a great addition. Thank you. The police won the game. Happy for them and I'm, I'm sure the fire's not having a good day. But anyways, the police won the game. We're happy to have had a really good game that night. It was, it was fun to watch. With around $54 prizes, our guests who were there were greeted with many wonderful gifts from local companies that offered their gift certificates and wonderful gifts to whomever was coming. And we truly appreciate that as well. Three amazing charities will be given $350 each today, which were the earnings that were, that were gained from the game. Cops for Kids and the Great Lakes Burn Camp. I'll have these gentlemen speak if they want to about that. And the Women Civic League of St. Clair Shores is going to be donating our money to a deserving company or organization within St. Clair Shores. And we'll give you more information on that in 2025. We are blessed to have so many people come. We're so grateful that the community showed up, as always. We are planning to have another Guns and Hoses in 2026, which we are excited about because it's going to be the 250th birth of our nation as well. So it's going to be a very exciting year all around. So I'm going to give the checks to the police and to the Fire Department. And if anybody wants to speak, I'm going to step back. Thank you, everyone.
You go first. I wish we would have lost. Many thanks to Women Civic League for taking up this charity game. Unfortunately, I wasn't there personally because I was out of state, but I've been there in the past and it's been a lot of fun competing against the Fire Department. We have a good time and usually they're pretty good games and it's nice to get everybody together and have a good time. And we, as a board member for Cops for Kids, we appreciate the donation. It will go a very long way to helping underprivileged kids in this community this Christmas. And again, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I'm Scott Campbell. I was the losing captain of the Fire Department team. We have a wonderful working relationship with the Police Department in this city. It's kind of known that not really a lot of Fire Departments and Police Departments get along with each other in a lot of other cities. So we have a awesome blessing here. We like to say we get along 364 days a year, the other day we play softball. But at the end of that game, every single year, we have a drink together, we celebrate, and really, we talk about who won. And for us, that's the Great Lakes Burn Camp, our 501(c)(3) through Local 1744. We give to them to aid children that have been the victim of fires. And they get to go to camp for a week and experience all of that wonderful outdoor life that every kid should get to experience. And they do it with others that are in the same situation that they're in and they have counselors there that can help them through everything to make sure they can physically get to do all the stuff that maybe they wouldn't get to do at other camps. So we're very pleased to play for the Great Lakes Burn Camp and couldn't have asked for a better night and a classier opponent. We had a very good time and I guess we'll see you in '26.
Fantastic. Sarah, thank you. Thanks to Women Civic League. And 2026, not only is it, it's the 75th anniversary of the city of St. Clair Shores. So that's a big year, too, in 2026.
You've got more reason to celebrate.
Fantastic. So again, Sarah, thank you. Carol, thank you. Janice, thank you. And thank the Women Civic League. We appreciate it.
Did you throw a strike or hit the backstop on your ceremonial pitch?
Did I throw a good pitch? Councilmember Rabello is Mayor Pro Tem now. There you go. Endless discussion.
Didn't bounce?
No, it did not bounce. I threw for the mound, dude, from the rubber. Item four is audience participations. Abby, do we have anyone?
No, we do not.
Item five is a request to adopt resolution to host a Jingle Mingle special event in the downtown Mac area, December 7th. Doctor, come on up. They had the Jingle Mingle last year, a little bit different this year because I think you're going to close the road. She's going to tell us a little bit about it and introduce herself and our partner here.
Hi, I'm Gina. I'm with Greater Chiropractic and then this is Angela of Washington with Rondell and we're both on the Jingle Mingle Committee.
Fantastic. So tell us a little bit about Jingle Mingle.
So the goal of this year, last year, it was, it was a really fun event, but, sorry, we were, is this good?
Great. Thank you.
Yes, okay. But without the road closure, it kind of made it difficult to, you know, do the mingling.
Mingle, yes.
But this year, our hope with the road closure is to really kind of give that downtown feel to allow everyone to walk around and we have a lot of really great events, if you want to say some of them. Smore stations, we have a DJ up at Rondell, there's going to be a choir, there's a contest for the best holiday dress, there's Santa, The Grinch, an outdoor movie. It's an endless list, so. And each of the businesses, our goal with this one, too, because I know a lot of the events we have down there, we bring in, there's a lot of outdoor vendors and vendors from all over, where this one is really focused on kind of shining the nine Mac businesses and everyone's going to kind of have their own little flair going on, which kind of makes it fun.
And just let me step back. How did, how did the run go?
We had about 200 people sign up and there was over 315 that showed up to run and sign up, so even more than that. So it was, so we had enough medals for all the kids, though, so that was good.
And I just want to, on behalf of the city, thank you because I think, you know, for the first couple of years, I think we had a lot of maybe events where we always had alcohol involved. And right now, we're getting more family events, another good, great family event. And I think you're really pushing that with the, with the run. So I really appreciate that. We're getting a whole different bunch of events there and it's great for nine mile Mac and great for the city of St. Clair Shores.
Definitely happy with the turnout. So we're planning it again next year.
Fantastic. So questions regarding that? Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Actually, just an additional comment, just in terms of, also what I'm seeing is that different businesses are taking on the lead for the different events. And that, like, this celebration was led by another business and that, and that's kind of the plan with the Nine Mac Merch Association, to spread out the responsibilities, but also to make sure, like, everyone's involved. So I think that's great. So thanks for putting this together. I know a lot of coordination's going in to get all the entertainment in place, so I think it's going to be a great day. So I'd make a motion to approve the application.
Support moved by Mr. Karen, supported by Mr. Rabello. Mr. Rabello?
I wanted to add on to what's going on down there. Ever since the social district came, the place is exploding down there. Thank God you guys came down there because the Fugas and the Washingtons and you're right in there doing some great stuff down there, fresh faces, fresh ideas, and keep going with it because it's just getting stronger and stronger down there. And you two there, I know how hard you work through there, in that area. So hats off to you. I didn't get a chance to do your 5K, but next year, okay?
So moved by Mr. Karen, supported by Mr. Rabello to adopt the resolution to host a Jingle Mingle in the downtown greater Mac, December 7th. All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Six to zero. Thank you. We'll see you December 7th. Thank you.
See you. Your holiday best.
Item six is a request for site plan approval for a new storage building at 22909 Stadium. Shorepoint Properties, Steve Scufone, Mr. Scufone, how are you?
Good. How you doing?
Very good. Tell us what's going on over there on Stadium Street.
Okay, so I'm here tonight to seek approval for a storage building. It's just under 4,000 square feet. And I had an existing building there, however, it was about 75 years old and because of the placement and the design, it just didn't lend well to, you know, adding on a little bit. So decided to take it down a few months ago and I met with Liz from Community Development and she was very helpful going over, you know, all the setbacks, the zoning, parking and things like that. It's kind of a unique property. It's one of the smallest light industrials in the city and it's burdened on the north side by a 12-foot drain easement. It's a 48-inch drain that runs right along the north property line. And because it abuts South Lake, the stadium, even though it's a parking lot, it looks commercial, it's actually, they consider it residential. So we have a 20-foot setback requirement on one side. So it takes, takes away about a third of the property. So, you know, we had to be really careful what we could design to meet all the ordinance and setbacks. The only thing I'm going to ask for, though, is after we got the survey back, so Tom Svensson and I are the only two properties that front stadium. And when we got the survey back, we were kind of surprised Tom was about two and a half feet from the front property line, which with some of the commercial, it's zero lot lines or it's setback right, you know, behind the sidewalk. So I was looking to maintain that building line and be even with Tom because otherwise my building would kind of sit back in a tunnel and it just won't aesthetically be pleasing. So I'm just going to go to, you know, zoning for that. Two of the other setbacks, I'm actually exceeding the south side, the backside of the property. So that's it. I'm here for any questions.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Rabello?
See, that's where the quality cap is on your corner and then I know where Tom Svensson is. He's still, he's been there for forever, doing good.
Yeah.
I saw you, the piece of property that you're looking at going straight into the South Lake parking lot off of Nine Mile Road. So I feel like Chris Vitale, when I say this, I think your drawing was great, okay?
Well, I think it's good, too.
So you went through the planning department already and they okayed this and it looks, it looks good. What are you using this for, office space here, Steve?
It'll be warehouse and, you know, business use, storage. And it's, it's kind of designed as a flex space. There is a floor plan. We're, we're kind of keeping an option open of putting a couple 20 by 46 commercial storage, like for a small contractor, towards the back of the building if we don't need the front. So we're going to build it just as one building and then have the, between unit two and three, have that wall optional in case we want to, you know, put a business back there or use it, you know, have a different use there.
And everyone signed off on this. Everything's good and you don't affect the South Lake parking at all back there, people getting through there. So thanks for making an improvement in St. Clair Shores. I would make a motion to approve planning case PPC 24016. And this, you want me to read the whole thing out?
No.
Okay. All right, because this is rather long. Request for site plan approval.
Support. With a question. Mr. Frederick? So Steve, when I went by today, you had, there's a fence up? Is that, is that fenced in or?
Yeah, that's always been there.
I know, but is that going to be?
We're going to have to modify it a bit, yeah.
All right.
So Tom, yeah, everyone's pretty much fenced in there, so, well, because of the placement of the garage door, the main.
Yeah.
Can't see it now, but the main door, we'll probably have to slide the gate over and make some adjustments.
Okay, all right. Very good. Awesome. I think, I think it's great. It's great. So moved by Mr. Rabello, supported by Mr. Frederick. I just want to make sure the following, you know, variance from the, for the ZBA is the wall on north side of the property must be attained, parked, includes drainage and paving, need to be submitted a landscape plan for the south and west sides of property. As part of the building, if dumpers placed in the site must be screened by all visible along with the mechanical equipment. And then a grade and a roof structure must be screened in all visible sides and then you have to get a setback variance and you're going to go back to ZBA regarding it. So that was moved by Mr. Rabello, supported by Mr. Frederick. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Six to zero. Thanks, Steve.
Hey, thank you.
Have a good evening. Item seven is to request transfer of ownership of a Class C license with Sunday sales permit for two bars to M&amp;D Lanes LLC at 25419 Jefferson. Good evening. How are you?
Great. How are you?
Very good. And you are?
Gina DeGregory.
Hi, Gina.
Hi.
So tell us what's going on there.
So we purchased, it's Harbor Lanes, it's known as, and Sports Channel. And we were approved by the MLCC. We're on a conditional license right now. Everything's to remain the same. Maybe future plans to update the restaurant, but as of now, everything will stay as is until the, the other St. Clair Shores project is complete.
That one's first?
Yes, exactly. Yep.
Okay, so we're, here again, we're just transferring the license. Questions on this?
No, you had great.
Mr. Frederick?
I was just going to say, I love the fact that you guys are investing in another property. That's huge.
Yes.
And I would make a motion to approve the request from M&amp;D Lanes LLC for the transfer of ownership for the Class C license.
Support. Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Item eight, request for site plan approval for the side renovation and outdoor seating area within the right-of-way at New York Deli. Stucky Vitale, Mr. John Vitale, good evening. Mark, you're going to stay in your seat there and have John take care of it?
Yeah. You're not related.
All right.
You're welcome. Mark. Good evening. Hello. This evening, I'm presenting a renovation and also the addition of an outdoor patio for New York Deli. We're not changing the footprint of the building, but we're upgrading the exterior front facade to allow a little better light, new windows, kind of a new design scheme to upgrade the existing building to a little newer, newer, fresher look, but more importantly, to include outdoor seating for the restaurant. Of course, today, restaurant businesses are really flourishing and have some outdoor seating, so we would like to propose the idea, and that's part of what we're renovating in front of the restaurant, to allow for a door, easy access to an outdoor patio. And I'm certainly here to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions? Mr. Frederick?
Thanks. So I love what you're doing. I think, I think it's awesome. Little Mac needs stuff like this, right? The one thing that I'm hoping that you can add, and it's real simple, and that is for the pedestrian traffic who would be walking or for a bicycler who would be riding, if there is a way to do an angle to the corner of the, so we're not, so, because if you're riding a bike, you can't just go like this and then go like that. So maybe an angle.
Modify the way.
Yeah.
We could do that. We have some flexibility there to do that.
Okay.
We'll look at that.
And that would be much appreciated. I know we ran into that same problem. Denise, remember down at Firehouse, I think, right? And it made, it makes a big difference when somebody, especially nowadays, people are driving, they got the little, they got a kid in the back cart, so it's a long, anyway. So that's all I had. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Rabello?
Yeah, Ron just sort of, it was great, taking a look at the Firehouse Pub, it's a great example because I know we were out there because there was people afraid of, you know, the angles and all that type of stuff. So building, building looks great. And I can't remember, are the hours changing, Mark? Okay. So hopefully get some action out there as far as, you know, maybe getting a little music out there and, you know, the next step. I know you do a great job and we're going to make sure this goes, this goes good. So I would, I would make a motion to approve the request for site plan approval at 25008 Little Mac. The New York Deli, conditional to resolution of the following, all lighting must be shielded from the residence and dye at the property line. A variance from the zoning board of appeals will be required to allow an outdoor seating area within the city right-of-way. A hold harmless agreement between the petitioner and the city will be required. A six-foot wall is required on the east property line or a variance from the ZBA is required. Keep the patio area where it has been proposed on the plans and reroute the sidewalk and add bullards around the outdoor seating area to protect the residence. I'm sure this is going to look great.
Moved by Mr. Rabello?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Frederick. Question, yes, Ms. Coto?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would just like to add that it might behoove the body to modify the motion slightly to allow for the outdoor seating area to be where it was proposed on the plans or shift slightly if that is the best option for the overall development as needed without having to return to this body.
Okay. Okay.
I'm good. I'm good with that.
There's a couple of questions, so let's just, before we modify, let's make sure that we, there's not other issues. Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Yeah, no, the overall design is great. I think the only question I have in terms of the patio area, the green belt that's going to be left, what is the width of that from the sidewalk to the road?
It's about 12 feet.
Those, still be 12 feet of green?
About 12 feet of green, 10 to 12 feet, if I recall.
Really? Okay. All right. Because the picture looks a lot narrower than that.
Yeah, it's about, it's about, from the, from the patio.
No, from the sidewalk.
From the sidewalk, it might be.
So surprise, six feet, then?
About six feet.
Okay. And that's still a bit more, because I'm thinking like the narrowest green belt we've got is probably nine mile? You know, that, that stretch there, which is maybe like three to four feet in that. So just looking that there's enough area because.
Probably about six feet.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I think that'd be good. Because I know that, like, when Firehouse is approved, that's a slower road. It's also on a curve in that, where this has 40 mile per hour traffic. You know, it's supposed to be 35. We know it's 40, 45 miles per hour, but I think just since that's bigger than some of the other comparable green belts we have in the area, we should be fine with that. And like the idea of the angled sidewalk as well, I think that'd be a big improvement to help with pedestrian and bike traffic around there. So great, great design and good luck with the construction.
Mr. Vitale?
Yes, John Vitale, who I'm not related to, just for the record. Is there a architectural or traffic safety or pedestrian standard? Because we're, we're talking about an angle. And I guess I'd like to know that is, is there a standard for what type of a curve would be acceptable, what kind of size radius or something like that?
Well, you're, you're correct. So.
John, get to the mic a little bit better.
I'm sorry. If we're introducing an angle, we might have to shrink the patio a little bit to make that work because we do want to not block the vision. There is a vision triangle that we would want to be careful not to block people ingressing and egressing out of the driveway. So we will study that, make sure that that triangle is preserved so that we don't sort of block the view of the traffic.
You know, I was thinking, it kind of looks like those two outboard tables closest to the road might not make the final cut once we have, you know, an angle in there that is suitable. But I guess that will be done to a professional standard, the angle and, you know, CDI will review that because that, that would be my concern that we do, you know, I would rather, I'd rather have it, you know, I'm big on the city being walkable, pedestrian-friendly and everything like that. And if somebody's riding a bike with a child seat on it or something, I want to see them be able to make that curve.
Sure.
So, okay. Otherwise, great plan and I look forward to it.
So it's moved by Mr. Rabello, supported by Mr. Frederick. Ms. Coto, if you come back to the podium for one second and make sure that we, we get the modification, then, then we get concurrence by the maker of the motion, which is Mr. Rabello?
The wording that I have here is keep the patio area where it has been proposed on the plans and reroute the sidewalk or shift slightly as needed.
Would you add, add, put that extra into the motion, Mr. Rabello?
That would, please add that to the motion.
I'll support that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Great. So we'll see that in the spring. I may not presume that, right? Sounds great. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Can't wait to have a corned beef on the patio.
The item nine is the master plan update. We hopefully will get that back here either at the next meeting or maybe the following, but we'll get it up here hopefully pretty quick. We'll go to item 10, bids, contracts, purchase orders, request to approve the purchase of the firefighting bunker gear.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening. You are not Chief Piper.
I am not. He is, he has some family business to attend to, so he asked my, asked me to come up here. Chad Hyvenham, Italian Chief.
Yes, sir.
I'm in charge of the equipment. First, I want to say thank you to all of you that were able to attend our air pack demonstration. Hopefully it was informative and it was enlightening and give you a chance to see a little bit of our job from the inside. I know our guys were really excited to open our doors to you and glad that most of you.
It was a great time.
Councilman Karen, anytime that you want to come by, we would be happy to run you through the exact same stuff. I can even have the ladder truck come and you can climb that tonight after meeting if you want.
Not quite dressed for that.
All right. So I'm, I'm here tonight to put forward for your consideration a budget amendment to allow us to purchase firefighter bunker gear for the department. As indicated in your packet, we received a large portion of the funding from a special state appropriation of funds specifically for this purpose. The amendment would help cover the additional costs associated with the specific type of gear that we specked out for the department. And with that, I can take any questions.
Mr. Lentz, so it was not in the budget?
It was not. It was anticipated for the 2025-2026 fiscal year to actually purchase this all on our own. As the Battalion Chief said, we were very fortunate to get a grant that is actually covering 81.5% of the proposed plan here. Like, as the Battalion Chief said as well, I mean, they went through a rigorous testing of these things. One of the biggest, I'll kind of comment, one of the biggest things was the Velcro, one of the other suits coming undone, having the snaps, I think is gonna be very beneficial, especially with all the wear and tear that they do go through when they go through training, and even on the job, as well as even some of the extra protection on the knees when they are on the ground crawling. So as stated here below, we're looking for a total cost of $201,841, with a grant secured of $164,500. The impact to the city budget would be $37,341 would be the shortfall, so we would be looking for an amendment. But this would take a capital project that we anticipated having next year and no longer need. So it is a huge advantage to be able to take advantage of this grant.
Fantastic. Questions? Mr. Vitale?
Only to add that after trying on the bunker gear, it gives you appreciation for it, and the, and the wear and tear that that must take, the tugging and the pulling and everything required to get it on, I could just imagine.
It does a lot for us. I mean, it has to do a lot, it has to regulate the heat that we're encountering in a fire, has to keep our bodies cool when we're not around, it has to protect us from cuts, it has to protect us from abrasions. It, we were, we ask that gear to do a lot, so...
Well, the day that we were able to try it on was probably ideal.
Yes.
It probably couldn't have been a better combination of heat and cold, and I couldn't imagine doing that in 90-degree heat.
It's a little different with our humidity.
In fire, yeah. So, yeah, I think it's a great purchase, and thanks for going out and getting the grant.
Yep.
Mr. Rabello?
Now, that was a learning experience that day, okay? If it wasn't for one of the firefighters there and the mayor, I might still might be in there trying to get my boot off, okay?
True statement.
We have it on camera.
Couldn't get my boot off. So I, look, and I had a whole different experience, a whole different outlook on just how physical that job is, okay? That's a younger guy's game for sure. And you guys, you guys were, it was very educational.
Good.
And I don't know if that's the first, that's the first time I can remember participating in it anyways.
This was the first time that we had, we've had that, and I do have to put a special shout to Brian Patiglio for putting this together, putting that together for you guys.
It was great. It was very informative.
Angela Vitale here would have loved it, okay?
She was there.
Oh, she was there, Dave.
She didn't, okay. Anyways, you guys, I, I trust that you make your decisions on, on what's comfortable for you, and how do you do your job the best, and even if it's $37,000 and 800, 300, $37,341 more, I would trust that you're, you guys know what you're doing for a safer job, for yourself, and a better job for the residents, like you guys have always done. So my trust is in you guys, and I'm sure you know how to pick this stuff out good. So I will make a motion to award the purchase of the structural firefighter gear to MES in the amount of $175,896.48, and boots to McQueen in the amount of $30,240, as well as approve a budget amendment of $37,341.
Support.
Keep up the work.
Moved by Mr. Rabello, supported by Ms. Burgess. Question, Mr. Frederick?
Yeah, I just, Chad, on the, on the sleeves, they have that thumb, the thumb, all these, these new ones will have that as well?
Yes.
Alright.
They all have to. Our, we, when we go into a fire, every bit of skin has to be covered.
Yeah, I, I had heard that there are some older ones or others, other departments that don't have those, and that they actually come back with burns on their wrist, so...
Yeah, and, yeah, and, and those spots even are kind of vulnerable to us, because they actually press against the skin. The whole idea of that gear, when you wore it, was a little bit baggy, it should be a little bit baggy, because that's what absorbs the heat. And so when we do, even with those gauntlets that we have, we can still come away with, with burns on the wrist if we're in a hot fire.
Well, God bless you guys for what you do. Thank you.
Moved by Ms. Rabello, supported by Ms. Burgess. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Six to zero, but Battalion Chief, thank you, I mean, the fact that you got the, the grant in the amount of $164,500, I mean, that is a big win for St. Clair Shores, and the Fire Department has done it year over year, I mean, not every year, but through the decades you have gotten grants for the community, and that, that really saves us and able to take money and allocate it elsewhere, we do appreciate it, so thanks for your hard work.
Thank you very much, yes.
10B, request for approval, acceptance of the Michigan Drug Court grant fiscal year 2025 and execution of the contract. Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
How are you?
Good, how are you guys today?
Great.
So I'm here, obviously, today to request the approval and execution of the contract for the MDCGP grant for the 2004-2005 fiscal year for the Drug Court.
Questions? Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Actually, the only question here, I know this is a long-standing program that we've had, but the, kind of the verbiage changed, it's the 40th District Problem Solving Court with the Drug Court Grant. So I guess, can you explain a little bit of the rebranding and the thought process there?
Yeah, so there's a little bit of a shift with it, so it used to be, our focus used to be just on narcotics, just simply prescription medications, opiates related. We have shifted it a little bit because of the change in the Prosecutor's Office, there was a bit of a policy change with the Prosecutor's Office that has allowed a lot of felonies now to come down, and a lot of them are in conjunction with OWIs. So we shifted it so that we do accept OWI cases now. So our, our main focus is still drugs and narcotics, but like I said, a lot of them have that component of OWI with it.
A little more expanded scope then going forward.
Pardon?
A little more expanded scope going forward then.
Definitely, yeah.
Good deal. Thank you.
Mr. Rabello? Angela, or Brienne, rather?
Cory.
Skaglioni, Cory.
Cory.
Cory, okay.
Sorry, I shouldn't, I, I assume, sorry.
There's a lot of names on this one, okay.
Sorry, Corey Kealan, sorry about that.
Are you Tim's daughter?
Tim's wife.
Wow.
But I'll take that, it's a compliment, thank you.
What a lucky guy.
He will love that when I tell him.
If I'm Tim, I'm not sure I'm happy with that.
Can we get to the question?
Well, hey, there. Okay.
We have four boys, so he's got no girls.
I was, yeah, I was gonna ask if Skaglioni was related to me, but she's, anyways, at some point, maybe in the next couple months, because I was interested in how these things turn out, like success stories of them. So, you know, at your convenience, maybe consent something that just gives us an idea of the, you know, the outcome of some of the stuff.
Yeah, definitely. We actually just submitted the year end, so our fiscal year goes till October, so actually September 30th was our end of our fiscal year. So I just submitted everything, all the data, and ended the budget, and so we actually have those numbers that we're calculating right now, so we actually should have them back in the next month or so.
Because I know, we sort of do this every year, and I always wondered what, what was the result.
Yeah, we actually have to, in December, we're gonna invite Council and everyone to join us. We do our big Drug Court graduation, where all of our participants come back, and that's usually in December. I haven't got a date for sure yet on it, but we're gonna invite everyone to come, to come over and join us for that as well, so, good to meet all the participants that graduated the last year.
Great. I would, Mr. Frederick?
Dave, are you done?
I'm done. Okay. In the, John and I know we have attended a few of the graduations, which is very interesting to see how people have turned their lives around and are so dedicated to what you guys have proposed. Now, the, on the OWI side, will they be part of, as moving forward, will they be part of a graduation ceremony as well, or?
Correct, they will. You know, off the top of my head, I can't remember if we've got any OWI specific that'll be part of the graduation this year. I honestly, I'm sorry, I can't remember if we do or not.
That's okay.
But, yeah, most definitely. So we've combined them all, all the participants are combined together, and Judge Fred Conjaly and myself and Ms. Skaglioni meet with them on Wednesdays, so we're all, all together.
Awesome. Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve and accept the Michigan Drug Court grant for fiscal year 2025 and execute the grant.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Rabello. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mrs. Kealan will see you.
Wow.
10C and 10D will come back, I believe, at the December 4th meeting, right?
Mr. Lentworth?
That's our goal.
That is correct. 10E, is request to approve Macomb County Public Works emergency check on storm drain repair invoice and budget amendment. Mr. Babcock, Director of DPW, Department of Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first item was actually an emergency drain repair. This was found when Southlake Schools was repaving the parking lot this past summer for Avalon Elementary School, and there's a 1954 drain that runs underneath their parking lot. It's corrugated metal pipe, and what they found when they started taking out the old parking lot was that the pipe had, you started collapsing in certain spots. So the county oversaw this work, they got three quotes, got the work done, and this is a request to pay the county back for the work that was done. The, it's actually, the cost is being split, one-third each, us, Southlake Schools, and Macomb County Public Works, so we're all splitting the cost of this work.
Mr. Karen?
Thank you. I know the agenda item has budget amendment, but the recommended motion does not have that listed, right?
Correct, we do have budget available in this storm sewer repairs fund, so we don't need that.
Yeah, the repairs and maintenance, so we don't really have to amend the budget for that. Okay.
Right. That's all. Mr. Vitale?
I believe when we were first made aware of this, I asked if the school district would be contributing a portion of this, and I actually thought it would be, you know, proportional to the amount of that, that the school would impact, but it looks like we're at a third, a third, a third, so, sounds like we came out of this pretty good.
Yeah.
I think so.
So, yeah, is, do we need a motion on this? So I'll definitely emphatically make the motion to approve the bid to CB, is it, I'm sorry, I should look down here who we're going with, to the, to pay the county the amount of $51,333.33.
Support.
And that's all I need, I guess.
Yep, moved by Mr. Vitale, supported by Ms. Burgess to pay Macomb County Public Works the amount of $51,333.33, and 33 cents. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, six to zero. And then 10F, Mr. Babcock?
The second item, this is, this was planned work. There's a number of, again, Macomb County Public Works drains in the south end of the city. They were at once open ditch drains, and as the city was being developed, they were filled in, and a corrugated metal pipe was put in the ground, again, most likely all from the 50s timeframe. We have had some issues with these particular drains in different spots where the, you know, our sewer department has had to step in and fix some emergency sinkholes and that, so we've teamed up with the Public Works Office to get into these sewers, to do cleaning and televising, and find out what repairs they may need before, you know, it's too late and we have additional collapses, so...
Of course.
So, again, this is a request to pay the Macomb County Public Works for this work to be done.
Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Yeah, Brian, when we did the SAW grant, what was it, about six, seven years ago?
Yep.
Did that cover any of the county drains like this, or is it just on our own, city-owned storm drains that we did the inspections on?
Correct, we only did the cleaning and investigating on city-owned storm drains, not the county ones.
Okay. Do you recall if the county got SAW grant money? I know we didn't cover like the entire city at that time, but I don't know if they did any work back then either.
I, I don't know if they, what their SAW grant money was used for, I can tell you the majority of organizations used it for sanitary sewers. It was kind of unique for us to use it for storm sewers, but at the time, that was what it was needed for.
Okay, thank you.
Need a motion?
I'll make motion to approve.
Moved by Mr. Karen?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Frederick. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 11, consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Karen, supported by Mr. Frederick, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Item 12, Mr. Lent, updates and files from prior meetings.
Mr. Vitale asked to include the legal description of Hazelwood Alley vacation in the resolution. That was done. Mr. Rabello asked if the shattered glass at Thiel Street and Kimberly Lane had been cleaned up. The police department went out in the area and checked, and there was no glass that was observed after the meeting. Mr. Rabello mentioned a van with flat tires that violates the city ordinance. He asked if this can be looked into. The van was removed from the property on 10/23/2024. Ms. Rusi asked if the city pulled a special permit for fat rob's food truck. No special event permit was pulled for this.
Thank you. Item 13 is comments by individual council members. Ms. Burgess? We'll start off with you.
Alrighty. Well, this was a fun-filled last weekend that we, or the weekend before last, when we went to the Fire Department, and we got to try on all their equipment, we just talked about it a few minutes ago with Battalion Chief, but I tell you that I walked out of there smiling from ear to ear the whole rest of the day, whole rest of the day. It was a very exciting, put on all the gear, and we actually went out and did training, crawled through, you know, very narrow ways, had to pull a body, a dead weight body of 200 pounds, and it was very, very interesting, and really gave us appreciation, especially today, voting for their new equipment. So, very exciting day there. Also, just want to talk about some upcoming events coming up. St. Clair Shores Parks and Rec Department teaming up with activities to put on our annual Christmas tree lighting, our tree lighting event, one of my favorite events of the year. I love getting out there and singing Christmas carols, and seeing all the kids, and last year with everybody with their red nose, light-up noses, that was really fun. So that is gonna be Friday, December 6th, from 6:00 to 8:00, they're gonna have a petting zoo, music, hot chocolate, crafts, and of course, Mr. and Mrs. Claus will be there, and they're having free hot dogs as well, so. The tunnel light starts right after that, December 7th, daily, from 5:00 to 9:00, from December 7th to January 26th, food trucks every Friday and Saturday. This is also a really good time, have lots of fun doing that. They have events there on Friday and Saturday, I think last year we had a painter and some special singers, so it's all gonna be a fun-filled Christmas season, and that's all I have. Oh, no, Angie's Toy Chest, forgot about this. Angie's Toy Chest is coming up, I actually talked with her again with our Marine Corps, talked to them yesterday, and very excited about this, the annual Toys for Tots Christmas party is gonna be Thursday, December 5th, from 6:00 PM to 12:00, it's at Pennas of Sterling Heights, submission is a hundred dollars, but you can get a, reserve a table of 10 for $900. You gotta bring a new unwrapped toy for tots, they have sponsorships available, so if you have any, want any information on this, you can order your tickets by going to www.angiestoych... angiestoychests.org, or you can email at info@angiestoychests.org.
Thank you. Mr. Rabello?
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks to everyone who, who voted for me for the Mayor Pro Tom. I take this stuff pretty seriously, and just hope to advance the city going forward. When the mayor can't assume his duties, he might be gone or something like that, so I'm very proud of that. So thank you. I wanted to ask about, there was a fellow that contacted me, he's got a St. Clair Shores business, his name is Bob Thompson. I'm not sure if he's contacted anyone else.
He has, he's contacted Mr. Spinizzola, referring to the lights, and Mr. Spinizzola will be reaching out to him. We've got a lot of the lights up right now, so we are gonna talk to him, but, or, when I say we, I mean Mr. Spinizzola.
Okay. Talked with him before I came, and I said, I'll give this to you, Rob.
Yep. We already have a lot of the lights up, Mr. Rabello, so that's a little bit of an issue, but we'll, we'll work with it.
It looks great, Mayor. I, I love the lights, the lights are great, and especially down, I mean, some people down in the south end of St. Clair Shores, their businesses like Whistle Stop, they lit their place up pretty good, and Harper Check Cashing, that place has lit up nice, too, so it always makes your city look great and festive, so I would encourage people to do that. We have no ordinance for the removal of leaves, correct, Denise Pike, you don't, okay, so I'm just letting people know, since we have no ordinance for leaf pickup, and I know it's hard, I mean, I live in a corner where the leaves just seem to come down good, and, you know, they're in the, on the curb and in the curb, so keep those things, it's very difficult for me sometimes, even. Keep the leaves out, out of the, out of the gutters and the curbs, because it all blows down into the storms, so if you can keep up with that. And sometimes your neighbors are getting your leaves on the, on their grass, so if you could possibly get those leaves picked up, there's been a couple, I know you contacted Ron and I, and I, but it makes a good point, get your leaves picked up so the neighbors don't have to pick up your leaves. So it's difficult sometimes. This one might be for the historical committee, because sometimes that we see the areas, you know, lose a little bit of their history, little by little. So if they could maybe take a look at getting a couple of little markers or plaques on the north end, there used to be an old north end fire station, still there, it used to be Tom and Jerry's Collision, so, thanks Denise for marking that down, because the building's still there, it was used as the north fire station at one time. It's around Jefferson and Avon. And there's a lot of work going on right now at the, I think that, maybe the building's completed, Nine Mile Road in Greater Mac, used to be the old south end fire station. So maybe we can look at getting a couple of little marker plaques down to let people know that that once, you know, was a, they were fire stations at one time. know that that once, you know, was a, they were fire stations at one time. The Toys for Tots, okay, and the Goodfellows, with the relocation of our stations, we're, I don't know if anyone has the answer to this, where do people bring their Goodfellows donations and?
Should I?
Yeah. Chief Allen is not here today, so I believe they're still going to be able to accept them at, because we still have, the public is open to come to St. Lucie's. But if that is different, I will get with council and let you know. But Police Station Duce is still operating full go, so St. Lucie's is where our temporary police department is located.
Right. Lobby there and everything else. So I mean, it's.
We have another meeting before that comes out.
We put this wonderful newsletter out and it's very informative. And in one of it, it's 911, and we talked about Cerise when they were up here, I don't know, two months ago or so. But I didn't see anything in here and I would, and I just wanted to let people know because this could be a life or death type of thing. When people come in and paramedics come into people's houses, they usually ask for medication, where the medication is that the person who's down. And it might help to put something on your refrigerator, okay? I mentioned it here, but it didn't, I didn't see it in here. I didn't make it in here. So if you have your medication on your refrigerator, sometimes it's the difference between, you know, things going smoothly and things going not smoothly. So that, one last thing, the master plan, okay? Liz Cotto's gone, but I want to thank her for getting copies of these master plans quick so we could read through them. And that's going to be coming up, I think, in a meeting in December. Okay. So looking forward to that. Lot to read through. Good things happening here in St. Clair Shores. Okay. And as the, as the holiday season approaches, there'll be a lot of people that need donations. And this one happened to be the Lake Shore Band. They need donations, so try to keep an eye on, you know, what's going on locally and so forth. They were out in front of the village market there and to the Lake Shore Band and Greg Alter Jr. And I want, I don't have enough good things to say about what happened on Saturday night at the, at our Civic Arena. Rob Spinizzola back there, you did a fantastic job hosting this event. But it was, it was the Stalls Annual Hockey Game versus the Red Wing Alumni. I've coached at the last eight years. I am so proud to say we beat the Stalls team, beat the Red Wing Alumni. And listen, it was a great, it was a great shootout, okay? It went into overtime and we won on a, and Stalls won on a shootout. Legitimately stuffed Danny DeKaiser at the end. So thank you, Stalls, for all you do for our community. This went to benefit the military dogs, okay? So South Lake has a great cafeteria for you folks to use. There's one of the military dogs on the right. That's the South Lake Bistro there on the left. Check that out. St. Clair Shores Snow Brigade, looking for people, looking for volunteers for the Snow Brigade right now to help some seniors and elders dig themselves out out of some, if they have some issues. And we're always looking for the volunteers. And on the right, every once in a while you get to meet somebody that you never thought you'd meet. And this is a bucket list item and I would recommend to everybody as we get older, I mean, I'm 62 years old, to start knocking off some bucket list things. And this one particularly was on the top of my list. That is Priscilla Presley and myself. So that was a big bucket list item for me. So I encourage everyone else to do it themselves if they got things like that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Karen.
Thank you. So first on the historical markers for the historical commission, basically, we've got two of them there in the works right now, one for Baumaritos and one for the VFW Bruce Post. So any future markers, and these are the larger ones that go in front of businesses, anyone can submit, but the historical commission does require a very detailed background and a lot of research that goes into the building and that with a lot of documentation because they take a lot of pride in the narrative that they put together. And, because these are basic, you know, we want these markers to stand the test of time for many years to come. So if any of those suggestions, those businesses can definitely submit a narrative to the historical commission for them to look at. But we've got the next two markers coming up here in the next year without Baumaritos and VFW Bruce Post. So that's that. Next beautification commission is going to be busy this week and next week getting the wreaths up all around in the city. So we're going to start decorating those here in City Hall on Wednesday night, starting at 6:30. So you'll start to see all those pop up around the city as we get the entire area ready for the holidays to come. So we appreciate all the hardworking volunteers of beautification commission for helping with that. And next I want to congratulate the City Clerk's Office, Abby, Amy, Katie, Kendra, and Steve for the great job on the election, you know, in terms of very high turnout. St. Clair Shores always has a higher turnout than, percentage wise, than all of our surrounding communities. And everything went great, Election Day. Nothing rose at our level of complaints, so we assume everything went great. I'm sure there's always, there's always issues day of that the staff does a great job at managing, but wonderful job managing this election and for all the great work over the last, you know, three months basically. Because it's no longer, it's just not Election Day, it's election season that we go through now. So I think, and I'll tell you one of the things, I came, I did the early voting here, which I know like on weekends, there were some lines, you know, that did go out, that is more used in this election than it was in the past. But probably one thing we need to talk about for next year, because legally we're only required to do it on state and federal elections. We have an option whether we do it for the city, but I think we ought to make that decision well before anyone even thinks about starting to file it for next year's election. So that the landscape and everything's decided before anyone starts filing it for office. So everyone knows what the rules and obligations are going to be.
Yeah. Okay, let's do that and we'll get it out for next year, early next year, right?
Yeah. Okay. So I appreciate that. But again, great job to the entire staff and all the election workers and everyone that still helped out despite all the ridiculousness with the Attorney General. Everyone that still came and helped out and been, you know, worked, you know, worked at our polls and helped us out through the whole thing. What was the, in the end, how many total people did you have on staff for this?
It was close to 300.
Close to 300 people.
For one day.
That helped out with the election. So greatly appreciate all of them and for them to dedicate that day to make sure our election went smooth. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
All right. Now, a few issues to bring up. First, I had sent Chief Allen an email when the, as part of the police station relocation, the press release had a suggested procedure for lost dogs, namely, a couple of problems I've got with it is that one of encouraging people to just try to keep the dog at your property because they weren't going to be taking the dogs at the temporary police station anymore. That is problematic for a lot of people, especially if you already have a dog. You can't really keep another dog on site, could run into issues. So I think we want to look at how do we still have a drop off location for that in terms of St. Lucie's and we understand why was that not part of the consideration going into this. The other part of it was listing the animal control number to call rather than dispatch. I'm not sure they staff that 24/7, the animal control number. There may be an emergency number Cerise may call, but I don't think we have, the public has access to a 24/7 number where animal control is actually come up to retrieve an animal to make sure we got possession and that possession is also tracked for any locked animals. So if we can look at that and get an answer back on that.
To piggyback a little bit on it, Chief Allen isn't here, but we have reached out to a private dog kennel and they are willing to host, hold the dogs for free as part of the procedure and we're working out the contracts and some legal language with them currently.
And you just got to be a little careful of that because not every dog is immunized to be in a kennel and that, so they've got to be very, they've got to have it very isolated as well, any space. And we also want to make sure there's good tracking if they're, if this business is going to take them in, which I think would be great, but we've got to make sure that dogs are tracked once they're there. We had an issue way back in the past of losing track of animals that came into our possession. So that we resolved when we moved to McComb County Animal Control to take over for all that, so. All right. Any update, and we know we pulled it from the agenda last time and it wasn't on this one, the farmhouse roof repair. Do you have any update on where we're at with that?
We do. We actually had to get a structural engineer out as well. They were looking like they were having some foundation issues as part of one of the reports. Good news and bad news. The foundation is actually in good shape. Bad news is, is when they did relocate the house, where the chimney was, there is no support under the chimney. So the chimney is actually pulling down on the foundation in that area. So we are looking to get that fixed because that's also pulling away a little bit from the roof. So we're trying to get that fixed before they do the roof. We also have reached out to the company that did the roof. One of the other things as well is because that house, we actually took to the state and put it through SHPO for the state historical preservations. We also wanted to make sure we reached out to the state because the state has more procedures and policies because we are as a state historical.
On that list.
Yes. So we want to make sure we do the whole bidding process in regards to what the state requires. And also, I know there were some questions of making sure that we go back with the cedar shank and not going with a metal roof, while the historical preservation is going to require us to make sure we stay with historical preservations.
It is a cedar shank?
Yes. Yeah. So we're working through all of that. I know Matt's already reached out to the state. We've got some of the procedures already started and we did the foundation already and we should be having a quote for that come back soon.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And last thing, the Bride's Park walk path, it is very severely cracked in many locations. And one of the things, it did not pop out to me in the spring when the work was done, but we actually had a section that was replaced with concrete by Italia. And this is in what I call the north loop on the Arboretum map. So the one section that was replaced, it's basically right by where the playground is. The paths on either side of it are the most heavily cracked of the entire path. So it gets back to how I've been harping on this path for two years now of engineering wise, not understanding what that ground was. And obviously at some point someone decided that section had to be concrete, asphalt wasn't going to be good enough. So they put concrete in there, which is now good, it's stable, but the rest of it around it is all broken apart and cracking big time. So kind of what was the decision process that only that one small section of concrete was put in versus that whole loop? Because that whole loop has some of the oldest trees in the park and basically roots galore. So I don't know if we can, you know, someone can go back and get an answer of whoever decided what that section was and why they stopped at either end of that and come back with an answer.
I guess just for transparency, the concrete area that wasn't replaced when they, it was the original, so when they redid the pathway, was that concrete original or was that after the first?
It was, the whole loop was asphalt.
Okay.
And then this one section got replaced with concrete in the spring when the other work was done. I didn't notice it back then.
Okay.
It was after texting with Rob this weekend when I first noticed it. But it was obviously, it was done in the spring, but when you look at the asphalt that had the overlay just in the spring, put on top of it, is very heavily cracked on either side of where that concrete is. So it's like the whole loop is suspect from a ground stability and where the concrete would be fine there. But, and I'm not sure how that was, Italia did the work, it was their stamp on it. I don't know whether Al's asphalt paid them to do it or whether it came out of some other, so we can track down how that got paid for. Appreciate it. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frederick.
Thanks, Mayor. So I'm going to double down on Angie's Toy Chest after what Linda said there too, because it's all part of the US Marine Corps Toys for Tots. And Angie's a, she's a local 501(c)(3) up on Jefferson there. And we really appreciate the hard work that she puts into this every year. And it's, you know, the Marine Corps does this all over the country and it's, it's an awesome night. It's, again, it's at Pennas, it's 100 bucks and they got silent auctions and raffles and all, all the usual stuff. And then for those of you who remember Doug Podell, 94.7.
Of course.
He's going to be the, he's going to be the emcee that night. Great guy, great guy.
Dock of rock.
The dock of rock. There you go. So anyway, it's at Pennas, it's, it's December 5th and Linda, I appreciate you bringing that up and I hope Angie appreciates that we gave her a double tonight here.
Yep.
All right. So first off, Dave, congratulations on being the Mayor Pro Tem. Well deserved, yeah, you can hit that if you want. Well, it was well deserved and I know you're going to do a great job and just be ready. Sometimes you get that call last minute from the mayor. I can't make the thing, so anyway. And also I wanted to say thanks to Abby and her, and her team. And I know, you know, my wife worked one of, worked for you at one of the polls and she was impressed with the fact that you guys bought everybody food this year. How cool was that? So, you know, I know it's, you're trying, trying to do a little bit better, you know, make people want to come back and all that, so. She was very impressed and had a great team at her place and I'm sure you had a great team all over the city. Because like John said, we didn't hear any, anything bad, so. And usually no news is good news for us, right? So. And then Dave, you mentioned the Goodfellows. I know they're going to be out there on December 7th, so I think we have one more meeting before that and they're probably going to come here and talk about it. I know the optimists are delivering food baskets this Sunday, so that'll be, that'll be good. We appreciate everybody that's donated in for that. And then also we got the candlelight vigil, which is, that's 7 o'clock. I think it's at St. Margaret's again. And that's, that's coming up on that, that's, what is it, the second Sunday? I think it's the second Sunday in, in December.
So the 8th?
I think so. 8th or, is it the 8th? I think it is the 8th. So anyway, we've got all that stuff happening and then of course, there's always great stuff happening at the library. So just to keep you up to date on that, registration for yoga together on December 4th at 6:30 PM begins November 21st. This class is for preschoolers ages three to five and an adult registration in this program may only be done by librarians. To register, please stop by the youth services desk or call the phone number at the library at 586-771-9020. Registration for messy makers on Tuesday, December 3rd at 2:00 PM begins November 24th. This 30-minute program for kids three to five will be messy and full of hands-on exploration and experimentation to create works of art. Registration can be done online, in person, or by phone. Registration for Pokemon Craft Night on December 17th at 6:30 begins December 2nd. Children ages six and up are invited to join Tracy David from the art shack to create Pokemon-themed crafts. Registration can be done online, in person, and by phone. And I see somebody wants to have her dad get her signed up right now. Join us for do it yourself personalized t-shirts on December 9th at 6:00 PM. Register online or with a librarian in person or over the phone starting November 23rd. Learn how to make a decorated bulb with vinyl cut on the cricket machine with our cricket ornament making event, December 5th at 6:00 PM. Open to those ages 11 and older. Registration online or with a librarian in person or by phone. Join Professor Daniel Harrison as he delves into the fascinating history of the St. Clair Flats. This is all going back to the mid 1800s in our submerged settlements of Lake St. Clair event on December 7th at 2:00 PM. I'm sure that's going to include the church that's out there, right? That's underwater. Saint, what is it, Anastasia?
Just continue.
St. Felicity.
St. Felicity.
Mr. Rabello claims he knows where it's at, but that's yet to be proven. Continue, Mr. Frederick.
He's probably broken a prop off on one of those headstones or something, right? So anyway, registration is online, in person, or over the phone. Slinsky Green Farmhouse Museum will be having an ornament making workshop. This is always fun on December 14th from 2:00 to 4:00 with a Poabic pottery artist. This event is for all ages. Costs $25 per person and registration is open and can be done at the library circulation desk. And then lastly, the St. Clair Shores Optimists Club is going to host their annual holiday celebration at the Slinsky Green Farmhouse Museum on December 7th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. There will be visits with Santa and Mrs. Claus in the parlor, hot chocolate, coffee crafts, and a holiday themed petting zoo in the museum's courtyard. This event is free for both residents and non-residents. And just by the way, in the month of October, remember we talked about library cards? The library had 974 residents sign up for library cards.
Sounds great.
It's huge. It's huge. So that's all I have, Mayor. Just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Yes.
And go Lions.
Thank you, Mr. Vitale.
Well, I'll also echo those words of praise for our city clerk and the job done on the election. I'm always very proud of the turnout that we have here in St. Clair Shores, again, exceeding everything surrounding us. I think that's one of the reasons we have the good city that we do is I think we have a well-informed electorate in this city. And speaking of well-informed, I made Mr. Eri aware that I would be looking for an update regarding two different things that pertain to Detroit Edison DTE. One of those being that One of those being that they work on our easements, but they won't tell us which easements they work on. They are hiding behind the idea of revealing personal information about who might live at an address, which we as a city would know anyways, for the most part. We know who owns the property. We know who we send tax bills to and things like that, but they come and perform work. DTE's contractors come and perform work on our easement, which is city property, and they won't tell us which easements they do work on, so then we have no way to follow up. Is that largely correct, Mr. Erie?
Yes, that has been correct in the past. We did have a, a meeting recently with legal counsel from DTE and our community representative from DTE, city manager Denise and myself, five of us met together, and we, we detailed the problem for them, and they are, they did not take a hard-line approach against giving us the information that we need. We did discuss the possibility of our passing an ordinance that would require that information to be given, but I believe that legal counsel for DTE indicated that they were going to go back to the drawing board to some degree and report back to us as to how they may be able to live within their own issues of what they believe are privacy matters with respect to their customers, yet also accomplishing the goals that we as a city have with respect to the issues involved in what you're bringing up. I don't know if they have reported back to us. I'm kind of looking at Denise or the city manager to see if they've reported back to us yet since we've had that meeting.
So, we have received one batch of properties back. It's actually by block, not by individual address. So, that's what they have indicated they can do is to make us aware of what block they've worked in on each street, but not aware of the specific address. And I forwarded those to you, Councilman.
Okay, yes, you did. But that really makes it quite impossible to go out and review their work because you have an entire block to deal with there. And I would think that, in all honesty, most of this work is not initiated by the resident at the service address anyways.
Correct.
This is really, nothing to hold against any resident or any kind of, we assume everyone probably has electricity in their homes. This is just obsc, obscuration to throw us off the trail. We can't look at the quality of their work that their contractors do. And there's another issue too, that being that we have a, we now have a court order for a home to be demolished. At one point, the court gave that homeowner more time. Nothing came of that time, no purchase agreement or anything like that. So, my understanding is now we again have the court order, we've already done the bidding for the demolition, and DTE refuses to disconnect the power to that home, which has a court order to be demolished. Is that also correct, Mr. Erie?
That is, that is correct. We did reach in the normal course in agreement with the homeowner at the property on 11, 11 Mile Road, and we were ready to proceed with the demolition. However, though that house is not being lived in, it is being used as storage by the owner, and there is still electricity on in the home, which is being paid for on a monthly basis. DTE indicated that as long as it was being paid, they would not turn it off. And so, we show caused the homeowner in the Macomb County Circuit Court. At the show cause, we reached a subsequent agreement that gave a very short window, this was in October of last month, actually, gave a very short window to the homeowner to either sell the property or to, or we demolish it and that he would have an obligation, a legal obligation pursuant to the court order to tell DTE to turn the electricity off. We have not really faced that problem with, with DTE in the past, but we were not happy with DTE with that particular issue, with them taking that, even though we had a court order that the property was to be demolished, they still wouldn't turn the electricity off. So, what we did was, we filed a formal complaint with the Michigan Public Service Commission, and we're asking the Michigan Public Service Commission to actually develop a policy. We don't have that problem with consumers, but to develop a policy that when there is a court order for demolition that comes out of the circuit court or any other court, that they have an obligation to turn off electricity, whether it's being paid for on a monthly basis or not. And that sort of, to some degree, it may dovetail into your issue number one, that maybe if we don't get satisfaction on issue number one that you brought up, we, we may want to go to the MPSC and, and address that issue. It's something that perhaps city manager and Denise and I can talk about.
Well, it's something I, you know, I want the residents to be aware of, you know. So, we as the, the body that should be reviewing the quality of construction work that's done in the city and the restoration of the city easements, we can't practically do that. We have an issue here with blight, and I believe one of the things that was said was that DTE has turned off power in a similar circumstance at some homes in the city of Detroit, which they deemed to be blighted. So, we now have DTE making decisions of how much blight is too much blight. So, we're being treated differently here. You know, really, just a, just an awful company to deal with. That's what the problem of having essentially a licensed monopoly is. We've only got the Michigan Public Service Commission to rely on to, to bring them to heed, and they are appointees of the governor. Are we at a point where maybe a resolution or maybe asking our state reps to introduce some type of legislation to, again, bring to heed this monstrous monopoly that can take the city on in court with all of the money that you spend for electricity versus all the money that you spend for taxes to try to get ordinances enforced while they pay their CEO $32 million a year?
I think that's irrational.
Maybe you could just kind of keep us updated on that, Mr. Erie, and then at some point, you know, maybe we as a council can reach out to our elected representatives and maybe a resolution and maybe some media coverage of this would, would bring shame on them. I don't know at this point what works. I would gladly put, if we didn't have but 70 days of sunshine in this state, I would gladly put solar panels on every ounce of my property and cut off the power from DTE, but I'm unable to practically do that. So, that's all I have, and everyone, happy Thanksgiving. Come up.
Thank you. Item 14, city manager report.
No report.
Item 15 is audience participation, which is a five-minute time limit, views and opinions expressed under audience participation, and those of the individual citizen only do not necessarily represent the views and opinions of the mayor, city council, or the administration of the St. Clair Shores. Anyone would like to speak? Yes, sir. Come on up, and we just need your name and the city reside in, and then Matt will show you where you sign in afterwards. Pull that mic down so we all can hear you. Thank you, sir.
All right, thanks. Thanks for letting me speak. My name's Jeff McGree, resident of St. Clair, St. Clair Shores. Talking about the water bills, we've been having some outrageous water bills that have no explanation at all. We talked to the city manager as well in the past during COVID, and we've been, we've probably been blown off. They've not, any sort of, came back and talked to us to tell us a resolution. We're getting $1,000 water bills, and then we get our taxes this year. You guys just, they've dumped all the taxes and seeing $1,100 tax raises in our house payments and our escrows, and no, no resolution whatsoever from the city. So, we've asked the city to give us some sort of resolution. Why are we seeing these water bills that are $1,000 in one time? And I'm not the only one that's having this. I've talked to people on the St. Clair Shores resident page, it's loaded with it the last probably six or seven years, especially during COVID, that we're seeing these bills. And then the city's done nothing about it, other than one time they did give us a new meter, and we did see it drop, but there was no resolution. Why are we being stuck with that bill if we're seeing a massive drop? And I do have some evidence to show the massive increase during COVID and then the massive decrease after the meters were changed. So, that doesn't make any sense to any of us, why are we seeing these massive $1,000 water bills in one bill? And then this year, like I said, you guys overloaded us, I mean, you guys, the city overloaded us with all these taxes. You know, my house payment is $110 extra now all of a sudden. Again, I'm on a fixed income, I have two kids, inflation, it's just outrageous, and then the city wants to nail us all of a sudden. I don't understand any of this. We've tried to resolve this with the city manager, with the water department, with some of the council people. We've gotten no reply from anybody other than that over three years ago and nothing since, so we're trying to get some information. So, we ask in the council to look into this to find out why myself and other people are seeing this in that area around 10 Mile and some other areas. I'm third-generation St. Clair Shores resident, and I've never had this problem until, like I said, the last maybe six or seven years, particularly during COVID.
Okay, well, look into it. I know you'll sign in and then put your address and we'll specifically, we'll look at your address. Anyone else? Anyone else that would, before we go to Mayor's comments? No one else? We'll go back to Mayor's comments. Two quick ones. April 6th of 2025, we're going to have another Hall of Fame. We've had a number of these over the last decade or two. So, if you know an athlete, coach, or an entire team from St. Clair Shores that deserves recognition for their greatness, I want you to go to our webpage. We have the application there, there's a committee that's going to review it. We already have some in, but we're looking for more. Again, it's going to be April 6th, 2025 is the, the Hall of Fame. So, again, we have done this a number of times over the past 10 years, and had some great recipients, and actually, it's been very enjoyable when we've had these Hall of Fame events. So, again, April 6th, 2025. Go to the webpage or Parks and Rec's webpage. The application is on here, I'll bring this up the next few times for a while, but we've got some, we've always had some great athletes here, and we want to keep that going. We have, of course, the Hall of Fame, which has got, is in the Civic Arena, it's, it's on the west wall when you walk in. No, Mr. Spinner, it's in the west wall, west wall there, and nice, nice.
Right next to the concession area.
Thank you. Mr. Karen, and they're just, there's nice plaques, and it's a nice, remembering some of the great athletes that St. Clair Shores has had over now near 75 years. And again, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and with, with that, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Move to adjourn. Support.
I move my Mr. Karen, supported by Mr. Frederick. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Good night.